Thank you for participating in this budget thing. I know you've got a lot of questions. Let's just start out by saying on the recording, we're not making any motions. We have no quorum. And we're just going to take our recommendations and requests to the staff. Once we have that information back, we'll make our recommendations and proposals to the board at large for action, right? I know you've got some, I've got some. Do you want to go first or you want me to go first?
Well, I don't have a ton of questions. I just want to make sure that we're on the same page. And I just want us to go over one more time. What is the problem that we're trying to solve?
I think there's a couple of issues. One is transparency. Our budget reports are not granular. They are not categorized to where we can see where the budget is being spent towards a program, a capital investment, a whatever that money is, it should all be categorized at a line item level so that we can decide as we're approving it. I'll give you a good example. So Mary says, we've been audited and we passed the audit. The scope of that audit is that we have a balanced budget and the money is being, we're not spending more money than we've been allotted. Well, that's one measure of success. I think we need to step it down lower to the program level and to the more granular budget level. And the other thing is I want to make sure that we're being accountable for the dollars that we spend. You know, in other words, we're documenting, we bought paper, we bought gas for the vehicles, you know, we need to document that so that we can report it back to the taxpayers. As part of that transparency, I want to pick up the torch from Echo. She wanted, and we have our trustee packets posted and those reports are there. However, the reports on the line items don't tell you how things were aggregated to the category. You know what I mean?
Yeah. So when you sign checks, what do you see? Cause you're the treasurer of the board and you're signing off on these funds. What are you seeing?
I'll show you what they look like. Hold on one second, then I'll share your screen.
Yeah, because I, I mean, I believe you. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding correctly before I try to make additional suggestions as to where I think we could potentially be more transparent with the library's funding.
Right.
Because are you not seeing receipts? Cause I would think that if they're going to give you a check to sign, that there would be a receipt attached to it or an invoice of some sort.
That would be wonderful.
You don't get that.
No, I can request it, but I think what we should see is, so you know, to this fast defense, they've asked for a certain amount of money and we've approved that money. I don't, I, you're even newer to the board than I am. I asked Diana and Echo, were they involved in budget planning? And not to the level that we should be. In other words, we have to spend this much on facilities. We need to spend this much. When we got the budget, when I got the budget, I came on and it was never explained to me how that budget was developed, never. And that's wrong. We should be collaborated with. It's, it's, it's the, we're responsible for the budget. And as the treasurer, I'm directly responsible. Now, we all as a board approve the budget. And the whole board approved it and every board meeting, we approve the expenses and budget spent in the previous month. And then we also get a forecast of the future month, but again, it's not categorized to the programmatic level or to the location. So I've been in finance for like 15 years now and, and when I have to provide a report to my direct, they want to see, they want to tie dollars to the value benefit, right? And I think we owe that to the taxpayers. They, they want to, they should know, okay, this is keep the lights on. It's not program specific, but this stuff is youth activities or this is, you know, collections. This is digital. This is, you know, books that we purchased. So anyway, back to your question on.
What we're trying to solve here?
Yeah, we're trying to solve a transparency issue. And we're also trying to solve an issue with sunshine requests. So the commissioners have a transparent website finance wise where you can go on and you can, you can see it. You don't have to sunshine it. You can just go get it. It's right there. So, and I'd like to have us there. I'd like to do that for us as well. So here's, here's what I see. Let me share my dashboard. So, so I just got this and it was kind of a thing. They didn't want to give it to me and I don't have, like I can't disperse funds from the Ozark Bank. But I, I asked for visibility as a check signer, right? So I can run reports. So being a data person, I like to have it electronic. I like to have it searchable. And I want it to where I can query and do reports, my own custom reports, because the way it spits it out, I'll show you, I'll show you that in a second. One of the reports that we're going to need will have to come from Mary because she's categorized the debits and credits. So this is, this is what I get. And it looks like this, if you go to the accounts, oh shoot, can't. So this is the dashboard. When I, when I pull out the reports, let me, let me go to this. This is what the transaction log looks like. And you've probably seen this with your own bank account. When you pull it down into a spreadsheet, I put it up and you have this available. I put it in the data and resource tab. So you can get in here and run your own. The reason you want to be able to do this is if these things are categorized at a very, very high level as, as debt, debit or credit, you can then pivot them. And that's what I've done here. What I'm trying to get a sense of is what's our run rate? What does it cost to, to run the libraries, right? We have four of them. And from this kind of information by the month and year, I can tell what our normal debit run rate is. I can average it out. I can see what our costs are. You can start to see where the income is coming in, right? Looks like at the end of the year, we got a big lump of sums here, 564,000, right? And then when you pivot things like this, you can also go in here and you can just double click on it and it'll, it'll blow it out into where it's coming from. Looks like we get some from deposit square. We also get some from, of course, as transfers from the county, we get our, you know, our revenues from the, you know, from the tax, from the property, property tax, right? So you'll see those in here. I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, but that's what you can see and you can filter and have fun with the queries and all that. Let me select all.
Now, have you checked to see if this is a report? I would imagine that this is a report they run. Like to come up with these numbers.
So this is a direct, I like to have data direct from the source and that's what this is. I still need it for the credit cards. Apparently we have credit cards on this account that are issued from a different bank. I don't know how that works. I have to find out. And then, then of course we have the CD. We have 250,000 on this, on the, in this bank account, $250,000. That's what the CD is here. But we have listed, I think it's $500,000 in CDs. So that means we must have a CD somewhere else. And I don't know where Mary Miller's put that one.
Yeah, we do have, there is money in a separate CD. I have, I have that documentation somewhere, but I don't know where it is.
Yeah, I don't know what bank account. So what we should have as, as a board, we should have visibility on where the money is and what bank does it sit in. We don't have, you know, I mean, obviously you don't need to know the bank account number and the PIN numbers and all that, but, but we should have visibility on this. And I think it's important that when we audit, I'm going to ask for next time we audit, that we also audit our process. Now, Mary Miller's told me, and I'll confirm with her, that we have finance policies or rules and I haven't seen them, but apparently they're there. Now, I know we have statute. We have to balance our budget. That's statute. We can't spend more than we take in. We do have to account for our spend, you know, we should be collecting receipts and, and we'll ask for that. So what I'm trying to avoid is any, any even appearance of impropriety. And by putting all this out there, I think we, you know, we can solve that. So that you have, what are we solving for? That, lack of transparency. And, and, and also connecting the dots of what we're trying to do in our mission statement and where we're putting our money. It should align.
No, I agree. I mean, I would like to at some point look at that strategic plan because all of the work that we are doing should be supporting our library's mission and we should have clear goals that everything is tied to. And, and I don't know, I, I think, you know, one of the reasons I wanted to work with you on this is because I, I'd like to ensure that that is what we are doing because I do find that, you know, being a parent to small children, that the library is not necessarily, it isn't my go-to resource for information. You know, and there's a lot of categories. What I did is I, I looked at the budget and I was highlighting and annotating because I have questions about how the monies are being spent because I wasn't looking at this as, you know, I didn't have this, I don't have a granular approach. I wanted to just see bigger picture and I wanted to see the categories, but I mean, if, if, you know, we spend a year, you know, doing a deep dive and ensuring that all of the expenses are, that they, that they are in the categories that were designated as, you know, the buckets of money that, that the funds are cupping from and that all of that is supporting the mission statement. I think that, that would be reassurance that the library's on the right track and that we're being good stewards of the resources that, that we have to manage.
Yep, I agree. And, and it could be that they have that mapped out. I'm pretty certain they do. I just need to be pointed to it and then be able to connect the dollars to those programs. And yeah, I know we have it, or at least they have it because we're staying in budget. We are, but, but we should be involved in the planning and we should be going, yep, that, that sounds like that's what the patrons would want. I'm, I'm actually, you know, I'm, I've raised my kids, but I have grandkids and, and I think that we maybe aren't focusing enough on children, you know, because the library is supposed to promote literacy. And I'd like to see what percentage of the budget are we spending on that? You know, and, and does that line up with what our mission is? I just did policies and bylaws yesterday with Diana. And our mission statement to date really doesn't say anything about what our goals are. And that's kind of disappointing.
It, it, yes. And I think what would be helpful, John, is, you know, as we're going through this process, looking at what other libraries are doing, because that's what I've been doing.
You got something?
Why reinvent the wheel?
Right, I, I agree.
And, and so here I have a whole stack of, of materials that I've been going through. With that in mind is let's see what other libraries are, are working on and how we get there. Now, okay, so I, I agree, you know, we, we do need to increase transparency. Yeah, because it will increase trust in what the work that the library is doing within the community. And hopefully it will also lessen the number of sign-in requests that, that the library is handling right now. But in, in terms of what I was thinking would be helpful. And that I think Mary Miller will be able to really, you know, help us with, that I think might be a good step is going through and, you know, going back again to the budget that, that the library has established already and defining each of the budget categories. For example, some of the things are very straightforward, like the estimated grant donations and reimburse, well, you've been there. Estimated grants, donations, reimbursements. What are the sources of those? Of those funds? But also breaking down, you know, what's the difference between electronic collections consortia and databases? Because that takes up over $200,000 of the budget.
Right. And here's the, here's the thing. As a finance person, Mary knows this, like if we, I mean, Mary Miller, and you probably know it too. If we buy hard copy books, those are assets and they depreciate. If you buy subscriptions to digital, this is nothing. It's, it's expense. You don't, you don't get to keep those digital copies. So that's out, that's money out the window. And the, the shift in libraries has been towards digital subscriptions and not owning, not owning. So.
And that's very expensive. When I had, when I had my orientation with the staff members, you know, I had a great conversation with Mary Miller and Tori regarding what's happening, you know, with how the libraries are changing, how there's this move towards going digital and how expensive that is. And they were talking about how hoopla and the, the book publishers really have strong control over the market. You know, the publishers, because you know, they, I can't re-explain what they said because it was just like drinking water from a fire hose on that day. But they had mentioned there being a need for legislation to pass over how the live, how the, you know, the, the digital platforms are price gouging. The libraries for the services that they receive. You know, and I'm with you. I, I personally, I prefer books, but I know that there's people out there, there's tons of people that love digital books, like the, the e-reader thing is, is their thing. And I think we, we want to be cognizant of that, you know, because there's got to be room for everyone.
I think there is. I think there is. I'm, my target audience for the, for the hard copy books is small kids, really, small kids. But, but I agree, we gotta, we gotta consider all the patrons.
Yeah, yeah, totally. So in terms of like information that I think would be helpful to get a better understanding of what the library, how the library is spending their money is to ask for, you know, explanations for the budget categories. Define that. We need those definitions.
Yeah, I agree. And I've asked for that. And she said, I give a roll-up report of that and she does, but it doesn't, it doesn't really break it down. Let me share a screen again. Let me show you what I'm talking about. So, and you've probably seen this in our packet. Let's see. Just the packet. I see. So that's that. Tell me if you can see this.
I can see that.
Okay. So you're, you've seen this before. We get it every month and I'll show you a practical example. And I've already mentioned this to Mary Miller. I, I think, you know, she probably sees it as a lot of work and it is a bit of work to get it set up at first. But once it's set up, it shouldn't be too, too bad. Oh wait a minute. Oh, this is not the one I want. Let's see if this one is better. Oh, this is a mess. I tried to bring the PDF down. So let's just go ahead and navigate to it because that's probably a cleaner way. So if you go to library, board of trustees. And I've noticed some of the data in here is old. So if you go to, our last meeting was 2022. That trustee packet. And this is probably helpful to anybody who's watching. So the stuff, the information is out there. You just kind of have to dig for it.
Yeah. And it would be nice if they just had, just like they have a button for the trustee packet, just have a specific bucket, bucket or button or, or link for financials.
Exactly. That's where I was going.
Just separate it.
Yes. And it should be, it should be a downloadable file. So they don't have to work because this, you can't search on this. You know, it's not, I can't make a pivot table out of it. I can't, you know, make pie graphs. I can't do anything with this. It's a PDF. It's locked. There's no reason why it can't be raw data. This, none of this stuff is proprietary. So anyway, this is the way she gives it and like, it's missing the category. Right? So we know there were anticipated $7,000 in credit card, but we only spent 2,600. So what are those transactions that are credit card? That's kind of frightening. I mean, I, you know, I, I know in a lot of situations for fraud, credit card is like the easiest thing or the most, I wouldn't say it's easy, but it's the most common thing for, for fraud. So there's no visibility on this. I do not have it. Mary's probably got it, but I'd like to have visibility on that. Cause we don't sign on these, by the way. I don't approve these. We, you approve them, I approve them. They're inside budget. Okay. So we're assuming they're doing the right thing because they're inside budget, but there's no visibility. I, you know, we have, we would have to go personally to Mary and say, can I see the, see the receipts? You know, so that's not so great. We can do better here is what I'm saying.
But doesn't the auditor, when they perform their year-end audit, they add up all the receipts, right?
They, they do, but like you said, they're not, the receipts have to be, they should be categorized, right? Cause depending on what they're buying with the credit card, right? It should go to, are they?
It should be $7,000.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a little bit of a chunk of change. So I mean, it's enough to, it would be something that, and I'm open to her ideas, Mary Miller's ideas is how can we make that number more gran, how can we see what that is? What kind of things do we have to purchase on credit card? Probably like gasoline for the vehicles. I don't, I don't know, things like that. But it's got to be there. It's just how do we make that more transparent? Have it up on the website as a link. Like you said, that's going to be my ask. And then what, which of these things are like collections, subscriptions to digital, you know, things like that. So some of them I already know what they are, like this bamboo HR, some of that, that's payroll. We use bamboo for our payroll services. They're also posting the open executive director position for us. It's a, it's a portal. So it's a, it's a software as a service. Like some of this stuff, like Casey's General Store, I don't know what that is. There probably supplies for a program.
No, that's the gas station, I think, right?
Uh, yes. It's a, well, yeah. So what is that? It's 380, it could be gasoline.
Gas, maybe. Yeah. But yeah, that would, that would be very helpful because that, that's needed.
So it would be simply taking this sheet and adding in a column for category. That's all. Just like you said, add a category and a category that's meaningful to us. Like we could say, you know, gasoline, fuel for the vehicles.
I think we need the definitions for this. And then these categories from the adjustment report should be these.
Yeah. So what she does is a roll-up report. She has that. So here's the individual things. Some of them tell what they are, you know, it's a city thing. Some of them, you know, they're expenses. Here's your hoopla, not cheap. But the, but when you ask for category, then you end up with something like this and it's not very granular. Right? It's just petty cash. If we could do this, it's basically taking these categories. And if you had it as a CSV file, like a flat file with, and this is probably right out of QuickBooks. I know she uses QuickBooks. QuickBooks allows for categories and subcategories. So you can easily do that. You just have to add them in. It's a little bit more typing, but it'll generate much better reports.
And let's, it's like you said, you do the work upfront.
Right.
And then it just falls into place. Yeah. I'm, I have limited experience with QuickBooks because I was the treasurer of my homeowners association many years ago. It's, 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 it's a matter, I think of just communicating to them what will be helpful. Because everyone wins when you have that information.
Yep. And it just generates honestly more questions than it does answers, this kind of report. Unfortunately, because you know, we're not, we all don't have finance degrees. And you know, when you say assets, I know what that means, but it, it includes a bunch of subcategories. And so we should try to break that out a little bit in layman's terms, right?
Yes.
So, so that's my ask. It's, it's same as yours. Add categories and in some cases, subcategories. Cause like if you say collections, you have digital, hard copy. You have, you know, you have subscriptions. And I don't know, we might even own some digital, like we actually own the digital copy. I don't know. I'm sure that's true. I know the videos and CDs, those are digital and we own them, I think. So, you know, that would probably need a subcategory or something. And I don't, I don't, we don't need to get into the blades of grass, but I mean, you should understand what, what we have, what we own and what we're renting. So that, because it helps, it helps me because when you understand what you're renting, those are reoccurring costs. And you need to know what your reoccurring costs are to figure out what your run rates are going to be. You know, what do I need every month to, to keep services at least the same? So that, that's that. So I can, I can write those up and run them by you and Mary Miller. And if I don't state it properly, maybe add in and edit or something. Or a notification.
Yeah, I think that would be a good starting point, John, because you know, I definitely have additional questions. Once we have the descriptions of the different budget categories and we have Mary Miller present, I think we can break the numbers down even further because, and I don't know if this is along the lines of you, you're, you're mentioning of run rates. But you know, I'd like to see how much it costs for the library to borrow these books via interlibrary loan and Mobius. We don't even have Mobius. Are we still paying for Mobius?
No, we are not.
Okay. But are we paying for Coolcat? Isn't Coolcat bundled with Mobius?
No, we pay a separate cost for that. And I don't know if you saw that announcement, they're, they're expanding their services for that. So, and it is a separate fee. So, yeah, and I don't even know, let's see if it's, so if it doesn't hit every month, you're not going to see it in some of these reports, which is kind of annoying, but.
Yeah. Because I think that should also be included. What payments monthly versus quarterly or however vendors charge the library.
Right. Well, the, the other helpful thing and I've had some discussions about this is what are we under contract for? Like for example, Mobius. That's a one-year renewable contract. It does have an escape clause for performance, like they haven't performed. So that would be a real easy one to get out of, but what, what obligations do we have for subscriptions by contract? I would like to have those transparent too, because you know, I, I don't know that we're going to be with Sierra forever. Sierra's I've heard is kind of going out of business.
Okay.
They're not adding, they're not adding new libraries. And they'll probably be gobbled up by somebody else. That's what you see a lot in the software industry. They buy the software just so they can have the customers. And then they go, here's our new product. So. But that, that is something we should look at because that's probably a significant portion of our operating cost is all of these subscriptions.
Yes. And how often are they used? You know, there was this outrage on Facebook regarding the, you know, I guess more equitable approach that the library is taking now with hoopla. And I, I was curious, you know, how many people? And I, I was curious, you know, how many people does that impact? You know, what's the cost of each person borrowing these books via Hoopla? Is that a service that's worth expanding? Like, looking at raw numbers and using that to help us to understand, you know, how the money is being sent and going back, spent, and, you know, going back to the interlibrary loan and the Mobius example. You know, there was, there was one book in particular, my favorite that I always bring up, the Clarence Thomas book. And that, the library did not buy that book, despite it being requested over six times by various people. The library kept borrowing it via Mobius.
Hmm.
So, you know, a- a- are we better off buying these books? Then we are borrowing them. We really need to see, you know, and how many books is the library borrowing every, every month, every year? Is it the same type of genre? Like, just, you know, looking at that information a little more, because I know for me, you know, the library leaves a lot to be desired for. And, you know, I, as, as a member of the homeschool community, when I talk to other moms, and it's a very large community here, as you know, um, a lot of people say that. You know, and.
I agree. So one of the things that Echoit said, and, and I think this is really something we should focus on, is we should be making data-driven decisions. So we know what we want. We should look at, like you said, look at usage, making sure that that's agnostic. In other words, we're not gearing towards one software or another, but what is the actual usage? And then look at, and then look at the cost and, because I know that we have um subscriptions that overlap. Like, you can get it here, you can get it there, or you can go into the library and get it hard copy, or so. Is, what is that usage? And Sierra does a, out of the box, I've been reading a lot, does some pretty good reporting um on that. We can see who's checked, not who, but how, how many people are checking those things out. And then we can make better decisions on um subscription services. Um. I don't, I don't want to make those decisions. I want the staff to make the decisions, but they should come to us with, with strong reasons why, data-driven reasons. You know what I mean? So.
Yes, that because you're right. It has to be staff-driven. But I'm wondering, are they from, you know, do the staff members, um, are they familiar with like writing SMART goals and utilizing data to inform their decision-making? Is this something that we're familiar with, because we haven't worked in the library sector and have worked in in, 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 in corporate America, that, that this is the way, I guess, you're, you're trained to make decisions, which I think is a very effective way?
It's a great question. I'm not gonna answer.
Okay.
I know, but I do think that um we can inform the library how we want to make decisions, because we're the board of directors, or the board of trustees. So we, I like to make decisions based on facts, not, I like Mobius, or I don't like Mobius, or I do like Sierra. And I, it, it really doesn't matter what I like. Let's look at it from factual basis, data-driven.
A- a- and, and I think that's where we, we, you know, wo- work more closely with the staff members, because I used to work for a nonprofit. Before I had my kids, I worked for an educational-based nonprofit, and we had phenomenal board members that would come in and guide us sometimes. When we were working on our strategic plan, they would give us feedback. They were excellent partners, where we had that rapport, where we could be like, hey, guys, can you come in and, and, you know, show us a new technique to do X, and they would. I mean, it, it was, it was a, a, a wonderful thing, because I've, I've been curious about that, because I look at the metrics that are presented to us at board meetings, and I'm like, huh, I feel like I would ask for more. We are asking for more. Um, we are at that point where I think um we need to make sure, because you know, people get comfortable.
Right.
You get, you get in your little ruts, and you know, I'm not gonna fix something that's not broken when there's still a lot of potential for improvement. And I think that's, that's, that's where, where I feel that we're at. Um, because I in, in the three years that we've been visiting this library, I really haven't seen much changes in the types of programs that are offered and, and the content that is made accessible to kids and adults.
No, I think that you, you hit the, I heard some things from the former um executive director about um the reluctance to look at a new ILS, Information Library System, um, because it's a lot of change, and it would take a lot of training and this and that. What we need to be aware of, you said digital is the move, and AI is a big deal now with libraries. Um, software doesn't have more than a two-year life, I can tell you, because I came from a software development team. Um, so if we can't be flexible and move with the current iteration of software, we're gonna be behind the times, and we're not gonna be providing the best services to our patrons. We're just not going to. And um, that, I don't think it takes two years to train staff on new software. We should be looking at software procurement the same way the corporate world does. How strong is the company? How strong is their support? How many companies like us or groups of, or libraries like us use that software? Um, is there good networking? Um, does it have all the feature sets we want? How flexible is it on reporting? You know, how easy is it to use? You know, so you get a, you do a three-sixty review on it, and like we do with everything, like we've been doing, we use a Kepler-Trope um analysis, a KT analysis. We build the things in that analysis that are important to us, and we include cost. And then we just measure it on a, on a fact-based um, um, decision-making criteria. And I, that's what I was asking for the staff to do, and I think we have to go back to that. The only thing I think is that we're working harder than we need to. These companies want to sell you their software. They want to, so let them put their sales shoes on and sell it to us. Um, they can do presentations, we can do them, you know, besides, I wouldn't maybe do it in a board meeting, because that would make the board meeting really long, but we could have like a town hall, and they could come present. And go, this is our software, and this is what it does for libraries. Here's a, here's a demo. You know, and then, then we can look at it and see if that makes sense, and let the, let the staff look at it and say, yeah, that makes sense. Um, but I, I don't think that's what's happening now. Um, I think we're siloing things.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's promising that we're on the hunt for a new executive director. Leadership starts at the top.
Right. I'm, I'm looking forward to that, um, to go through that process. And um getting a lot of uh emails on it.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll do that. Is there anything else I need to take to, I say we. We should be taking these requests to Mary and Tori. I think the, the, the other, so here's what I've heard in the past. That takes a lot of time, John. Um, you know, adding these categories and things. Just tell me the ones that you don't understand, and I'll, I'll tell you what they are. I think that's, we need to move from the piecemeal, I got a question about a particular thing, and just, like you said, hit it categorically. Um, and make the investment in that upfront. And then the next piece, um, Mary had told me that, um, I think it's the commissioners have their transparency on a separate software, and they said it's very expensive. It's like thirty thousand dollars a year. I don't think we need that. We, we just need a flat file that we can hyperlink to the patrons if they wanna pull it down.
Yeah, yeah, and I think we have to start somewhere, right? You know, ideally, something like what the commissioners has would be fantastic, but in the meantime, in the, in the, in the interest of, of, of saving Tori eight hours of work to complete these sunshine requests, because people are asking for a lot of information regarding the financials, I think it's worth us sitting down and just biting the bullet and pushing through and putting the categories in. You know, I, I, it, it's, in, in another argument, I another reason why I'm so in favor of putting in the categories is because this is all tribal knowledge. That's what I noticed. There's a lot of tribal knowledge among the staff members, which is fantastic. That happens in a lot of organizations, but what happens when someone is sick, or someone transitions to another position? And whoever held this tribal knowledge, like here with the, with the invoices and everything else that they do at the library, you know, it's, it's, it'll just make that transition that much easier in the future.
Totally agree. Because like, you'll see on the disbursements, you'll get one, and then you won't see one for a couple of months, and then you get another one. You're like, is this a quarterly payment? Is this a biannual? Is this an annual? And, you know, that kind of stuff would be hugely helpful. Um, don't have to ask so many silly questions.
Yeah, yeah, no, totally. Now, I have another question I did wanna bring up to you. Um, and I think this is all I have on my end. Uh, you know, Trump signed that executive order last week that's gonna significantly reduce funding for the Institute of Museum and Library Services. I'd like to know if the library is gonna be impacted, because I did read, you know, I went on a website for the IMLS and couldn't really tell based on the grants that, that are dispersed in the state of Missouri if and how we would be impacted. And that's something, you know, we don't get a lot of money in, in grants, that's sixty thousand dollars. But um, that would be something good to know, because that might result in us having to make changes, adjustments to the budgeting and the spending.
Right. Um, I think it, it might impact us, I'm not sure. It's not gonna, it's not gonna hurt us too bad. Um, most of our money comes from the county, you know that, and um, you know, less than five percent comes from elsewhere. Um, so we can't get more than five percent from friends of the library, so we stay under that. And it's probably about less than five percent is from um state and federal, so. Uh, it will impact us, but I don't think it's gonna, it's gonna cause us to have to do anything drastic. But we can hear from them. We should hear from the staff and ask them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Super.
So I, my goal is to have these requests put together for Mary, so she can see them when she gets back from vacation. I know that's hard to come back from vacation and hit, hit all these emails, but um, so that's that, and then we'll be prepared. The cadence for the meetings, I'm thinking, um, there's gonna be an update at the next open board meeting of what we discussed. I'll try to summarize it as best I can. And then, um, if we can meet, if it's not too often, once a week until we get um, a handle on what we're asking for, and that there are no questions coming back to us, they have their homework, then we could probably recess till we get all of our data back. Um, we probably need a meeting with um Mary, us, and the IT guy, so that we can get this thing posted, the, the fruit of what we're talking about posted on the website, so that we can accomplish that goal of transparency. So it's probably another, maybe two, three meetings, and I think we could have this wrapped up.
Okay, that works.
Okay, so can we plan on um Fridays as an open slot and, until we get this um closed out?
Fridays at four PM?
Same time, yeah. And I think we can keep it under an hour.
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
All season bylaws went two hours, and we could have kept going, but I'm, you know, more than an hour is really, and it's, it's a long time to be in a meeting.
It is. Yeah, let's do that then.
Okay, I'll send um, send these requests off to Mary with, with a copy to Tori and, and yourself. And um, hopefully she'll be able to be prepared. I'd like people to come to the meetings prepared um with the things we're asking for, and then she can have a response to um, to the subcommittee meeting.
Yes, and I, and, and I think Friday should be, give the enough time to, to, to get this information together, because it's not a lot.
No, and we're not gonna do anything. We're just asking her to answer to their request. You know, is this a lot of work, a little bit of work? Is it, is it impossible what we're asking for? I don't, I don't believe it is, but, you know, it gives her a chance to respond.
Okay, sounds good. Now, who is the invitation for the meeting gonna come from? Because that threw me off a little.
Yeah, it threw me off a little, too. Um, let me speak to that. Um, I, I scheduled the meeting because there were no staff involved. Um, and I needed to be the host, so that I can um mute somebody if they're, got background noise or the whatnot. When you're, when you're sharing a meeting, you need to be able to host the meeting, so that's why I did it. Tori uh reminded me that she is the custodian of records, and she wanted to have the um video recording. I told her I would send it to her, but she wasn't comfortable with that, so she wanted to be the author of the meeting. She solved the problem by having uh you, I, and um, the IT guy, uh, and Nicholas, um Heath Emerson and Nicholas Holiday as co-hosts. So that, you know, in the future, if we're not, if we just wanna have a meeting, but we're not gonna do anything, he, he, she needs to post all the meetings. And that she's the custodian of records, and that's why she posted the meeting. So I won't be posting any meetings in, until um we figure out a better way to do it.
Okay, are, are they just gonna appear on the calendar then? Because I didn't receive an invitation. Like, it was weird. You, after you said it, when I emailed you to ask you, I went on the calendar, and it just appeared there. It was really interesting. I hadn't, I guess I hadn't opened up that button on my, on my board email account.
You, it, I don't know what happened. Sometimes, like, Google, well, let me share this tab. So I assumed that you would have got the meeting invite, and you did accept it.
I accepted it right before I happened. I said, oh, there it is, accept.
So, yeah, so she's the organizer, and that's, yeah, so the, you, you'll get a meeting invite, and I, just in case you didn't get it, or it got lost in junk mail, I, um, I sent you the, the information. And also dial in, um, you don't have to be on video, so.
Okay.
Yep.
And it's always gonna be this way, yeah?
For the subcommittee meetings, yeah, because I'm, I'm not gonna do anything different. I, you know, I, I think we just need to have a steady cadence and, and let um Tori get her video, because this will be posted up.
Okay, perfect.
I don't have anything else. Uh, can we close?
Yep.
All right, we'll talk.
This is great. Thank you. Have a nice weekend.